Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome. To our Monday, March 7th caucus and work session prior to our regular meeting. What we wanted to do is the mayor asked if she could pop into the meeting and discuss the ARPA funding, the process, and those updates that were recently put out. So I believe the mayor's on standby. And so what we'll do is as well let her in, let her open up and and give us the updates. And then if members have questions, you can ask the mayor about the process and whatnot. Okay, so you can, is the mayor here?
Yes, they're joining.
Okay, all right. Okay, welcome, Madam Mayor. We are going to open up and let you start with your with the update and for members to ask any questions they may have about the process. So with that, I will turn it over to you and your team.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to touch base quickly with all of the council members so that we can make sure that everyone has the same information at the same time. And I'm joined by Anne Marie, who, if she can share her screen, will be able to follow up with some visuals. And we can also email them to you. But just at a high level, as you may have seen, we issued a press release today, updating where we are on the ARPA application process. You know, we got off to a pretty slow start. And those of us on the leadership team, I know, were a little concerned about whether we would get a significant number of applications. I can report to you today that we received 147 applications by the suggested deadline of March 1st, asking for or with grant proposals, seeking more than $141 million. So the good news is we had great responsiveness, obviously, all of you. And and our efforts to get the word out and encourage people to apply certainly worked. And we were able to get a lot of interest. That's the good news. The challenging part of that is that we have a lot of applications to score. And so I just wanted to use this opportunity. A number of you have already signed up to be on the success teams. And I would encourage all of the council members who have the ability to be on those success teams to be part of that review process. At the minimum, we will make applications available to you because, as you can see from this tight, tight timeline, you know, the time between when we're going to be providing you with that final list of recommended projects and when we're going to need a vote on that is very tight. And Anne Marie is highlighting that there. You're going to receive those packets on May 27th in advance of your June 6th meeting. And it's really important that we get this funding out there. We know that there are many of these applicants are really looking to get these projects jumpstarted. They're going to need to know what the commitment is. And we also want to ensure that we are able to report back to Washington that we're putting this money to good use so that we can ensure that there's no clawback or any other issues with respect to the ARPA funding, of which there has been, you know, some efforts afoot to claw some of this money back. So that's what I wanted to make sure you were aware of. We're again, I'm grateful to those who are on the leadership team as well as those who are already serving on the success teams to really focus on getting those applications scored and reviewed. This is going to be a great opportunity for all of us. It's a great opportunity for our city. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I think in our press release, we provided you and and the public information about really the diversity, the breadth and depth of the applications that we received. So this is really exciting for all of us. And I think we have a hard job ahead to get these whittled down and scored and to get this funding out there.
Mr. Holly?
Yeah, Mayor, you had mentioned something I hadn't heard about. And just real briefly, who's trying to claw back the money? I mean, is there a group out there trying to take it back from us?
So there has been legislation introduced a couple of times in Congress. So, you know, there, there has been, you know, some talk of that. They have not been successful. But we were rallied by the US Conference of Mayors again today to make sure that we are telling our story about how we are putting this money to use and the impact that it's having in our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Romero?
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for coming on to kind of explain this. I got a few questions about the statement saying that the applications received between 3.1 and 3.11 may only be considered for full evaluation process if funding's available after the initial evaluation process. And I'm curious, what should I say to applicants that want to still apply that because the pre-application portal is still open? And and when you see a statement like that, I want to tell them like, please apply because we're still considering it. But because we've had such a positive response to the applications thus far and, you know, per the breakdowns of the money that's available and, you know, what people are asking for, what can we say to people that still want to apply before the 11th deadline? But might not be.
I would say, yeah, that's a great question, Gabriella. And, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion about this. And I think we need, you know, we have volunteers who are, you know, scoring these applications. And so we've got to get the process started. You know, I don't know what the quality is of those applications. And the hurdle for the pre-application is pretty low. So, you know, I think that if if there are those who who still want to fill out that pre-application, there may still be opportunities. The other, the other thing about, you know, the, the, the pre-application process is that we are looking to create partnerships. So it's not going to go into, you know, a vault and not be looked at at all. You know, I, I do think that the fact that this is going to be so competitive, obviously, you know, we strongly suggested that deadline of March 1st, not really knowing how that was going to work out for applicants. And I also think that when we look at, you know, 2023, that there may be an opportunity for some additional ARPA funding of that second round of ARPA funding. I don't want to make any promises, but I certainly, you know, am hopeful. And and it would be my, you know, desire and our desire, I think, to be able to do another round. And we would, you know, then start with looking at those that had filled out that pre-application.
Okay, any, any further questions? Okay, I think we are just about what we are all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks so much.
If I could just, and you can go, Mayor, but just to, we do have five council members who have committed to being part of this process, which thank you so much. But the more council members that can be involved, the better. So if you are interested, we do have kind of more information on it and would love to have more council members involved. So that is it.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're good. And so, and so what I would also stress is that we have the ability to go in through overtime and look at these applications. I think we should, remember, should take advantage of that. Because again, if you look at that timeline, it is a tight turnaround. And if you, you know, you had a chance to review some of this information prior, it won't be like you're starting from square one when we, when they actually hit us and we get them. So just be mindful of that. So, okay, back into caucus, back on the agenda. For consideration of, excuse me, for the, the agenda, I'll be offering the February 24th meeting minutes for consideration for passage. Okay. Okay, then moving on to, to local laws held. Mr. Anani's Local Lobby of 2022, I'll be looking to discharge and then have us vote on it to pass. That's the one where we're looking for the extension for the municipal internet commit commission. So I'll make the motion to discharge. We have to all, it has to be unanimous. And then we'll move on if if it we get unanimous to Mr. Anani offering it and then we'll vote on. Okay, that's Local Lobby. Okay, then moving on to resolutions. We have an intro by Ms. Frederick for the, it's 193122. That's for the creation of the position in water in the Water Department. That'll be a referral to finance. And then we'll have Mr. Hyde's Ukraine Support Resolution will be added by majority consent. That's 203122R. May apologize, we apologize, I got sent out late. But it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. And it's just a general support for the Ukrainian people in their, in their fight against Russia. We, I'm sure Mr. Hyde's looking for cosponsors for that. We all, everyone interested in cosponsoring the Ukrainian support. Show of hands, yes? I think we're pretty much unanimous in that. I can't see Mr. Robinson or Mr. Johnson's hands, but I guess we can just go through. Yes, okay. All right, so that's that for the, that resolution. Then Mr. Onto Resolutions held, Mr. Anani's 172222 for the crash victims bills. There was a slight amendment, Mr. Anani, you want to just real quick? Jump on. And I, I think there's an eighth piece of, the eighth bill that got added.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it just goes back to making sure that our pedestrians are safe. And then, you know, it's catching on with the state as relates to the importance of pedestrian safety and walkability. So there's different members in the legislature who are introducing legislations to support this cause. It's such a noble and important issue. So I'm glad that other, the state legislatures are finally getting on top of this and just advocating for this.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. And that, that'll be as amended. Okay, so that is it for the agenda. And so before the mayor decided to come in, I intended on talking about the ARPA stuff, but she came in and talked about it. So that, that was very, very helpful and save the trouble of you guys having to listen to me. So Mr. Williams. You still muted? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, President Protam. Councilmember Farrell actually jogged my memory about this earlier today. But the executive order currently authorizing us and all other boards and commissions to meet remotely is set to expire next Wednesday, March 16th. I don't know yet whether the governor plans on extending that. I think for now, we have to operate under the assumption that she won't be. That may change. But in any event, again, next Wednesday, so it actually runs through that day. So we can do caucus next week remotely if the council wants to. But after that, assuming everything stays the way it is now, we would have to go back in person for our next full council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. I, I would support caucus, you know, having our caucus in person next Wednesday. But again, we're a collective here and we all have a say. How, how members feel about the Wednesday caucus in person? But we're definitely on the subsequent, the following meeting, we're going to be in person, the 21st.
And if I could just add in, and I personally would love us to be back. I'm kind of anxious for us to miss all the people. But we do have to, no matter what we decide tonight, we are going to be double checking that all of our broadcasting equipment is still working. So if there's any issue with that, even if we all totally want to be in person on Wednesday, we might have to wait for the following one, just to emotionally prepare people for that.
Right, right. Yeah. And so, yeah, we, we had our last in-person meeting where we had everything clicking. And we had all of that support was back in December. So it's, it's been a minute. And we want to make sure that stuff is all functioning. Ms. Romero, then Mr. Anani, and then Mr. Adams.
Thank you. If we are all in person and required to be in person, are we still going to allow for both streaming to Facebook and virtual public comment?
That's, yeah.
Including the virtual public comment one, too?
Yeah. You know, and just, just thinking, that's gonna.
Yeah, I don't know that we decided on virtual public comment or not.
Because, yeah, because if you think about that, that could make for a, I mean, we want public comment. We want to engage folks that, that I guess we'd have to decide on that. No, Mr. President?
Public comment, back in the chambers.
Right, yeah, there's the person can come. Okay.
But we would still be fully broadcasting in the same way.
Can I ask a follow up to that?
Yep, yep, you still have a floor.
Is that, is that decision just like a public meetings law situation? Or is that, I just, I love the idea of virtual public comment because it allows for more people to provide public comment. So I'm just not sure if that's something we could potentially change or if that's just like a, I don't know, sure if President Ellis can maybe elaborate, but I'm just curious.
I don't know if it's public meetings law. I'm just saying that's my preference.
Okay.
It's an, it's an open meeting. It's an open meetings law. The state has to change that legislation. And there are several bills in the Assembly and the Senate on this issue. But all of that has to go through the legislature before we can allow for virtual comments or any kind of hybrid virtual meeting stuff. But I also want to note Sergio's had his hand up for a while.
Right. Oh.
It's kind of separate to what we were talking about. I just had a quick question for Alfredo regarding ordinance 62222. I'm just trying to figure out what is the thought process or purpose for this? Or if there was an issue behind it that led you here?
Right, and right, what I, what I would say, I mean, we have time because we don't have such a full schedule before the meeting. But that committee meeting is really where that issue should be gone through and talked about. But go ahead, Mr. Ballerman, you want to?
I don't got the legislation in front of me. Is this inclusion of housing or is this the?
Parking, it's, yeah, it's the parking, the two hours, you got to move every two hours if you, if you're not a resident.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's an issue that, you know, for people who live in, in the area now. I've, I've been fighting to get residential parking expanded into my ward. But that's an issue that a lot of residents have who live in that area that, you know, people stay beyond the two hours. And, you know, you're supposed to only be there for two hours. So then people move just one block and then it's, well, no. The, the point is, if, if you work, that's great. Pay for parking. Because people who live in the neighborhoods and who need the parking and don't have any other opportunities, you know, should have the ability to be able to, you know, park in, in that area. But we have too many people who, who, who work in, in for the state. I'll say my good friends, all my good friends who work for the state and park there in, in many of our neighborhoods. But then, you know, you know, just move their cars one to blacks. The goal is to make it so that people who live in the neighborhood get the real benefit of the two-hour limit of non-residence, which will still be pro-business because most times when you're going to visit a restaurant and you're going to visit a business, you're there approximately two hours, you know. So, so that's a little bit about it. But, you know, we can talk about it offline. Or I know it's coming up for one of the committee meetings.
I, I'm.
I'm glad you brought up that it's just not about residential because we do have businesses in our residential districts. And the business owners have said they need, they need, you know, parking to move because a lot of our customers can't get in because state workers are parking there. So it is also, it does affect our small business owners as well.
And it's nothing against, you know, state workers. It's just, it's, we need to be looking at how we can benefit our residents and, and our, our, our businesses that are here. But yeah, no, I mean, I'm trying to expand. I mean, we, we have expanded residential parking. There's another discussion we need to have of how we distribute the, those parking spaces and so forth. And I'm not sure when we're going to have that conversation, but I know it's one I'm looking forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. The rest will continue in the, the committee. Mr. Mr. Hyde, Mr. Clark, and then Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the open meetings law and whether or not we can have public comment virtually. I think as Councilmember Keegan said, there's a number of bills. So to the extent there's members here that would like to adopt a resolution to encourage our lawmakers to make those changes. I would be in favor of that and can work with anyone that's interested in that. I think it's a good change.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, Mr. Johnson, and then Mr. Anani. You got to learn how to use that virtual hand there, buddy. Get in the queue and then we'll, we'll move on. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I just wanted to have a quick, fast discussion about the whole caucus meeting. And if it should be live, because that's the time where we should be able to have discussion amongst the, the council members. And a lot of times, we can't have the conversations that we want to have sometimes because it's live. And, and I look at other bodies and how they operate. They do have time for members to have a conversation outside of the public. And I, I would like to start having a conversation, taking a serious look at why are we going in this route when a lot of times information is given, given to us at the last minute? And we don't even get a chance to really have conversation amongst each other. And the, that shouldn't be the only place that conversations are having, being held is in committee meetings. So that's something that I'm hoping that members can really think about and and, and, and open up to some changes. Because a lot of times I think that we don't get a chance to talk, all 15 of us, in, in that type of manner. And it would be a positive discussion. So I just wanted to point that out there because it should be more discussion on some of these issues that we have to vote on so fast.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Anani?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo the sentiment that was shared earlier. And it's no secret when it comes to ways that the council could avoid, engage the public, I'm all for it. So I think that maybe we have to take a look at, you know, maybe a public comment, just as virtual public comment. Maybe we dwell it down to one minute or, you know, two minutes. But I think that, you know, as a body, we should try to as much as possible to engage the residents of the city. You know, that's why sometimes I have my counsel in the corner to meet people where they are. And I think that we all have a role to do that. You know, some people just prefer to go virtual rather than come into city halls. So I just want to just share my support for, you know, having virtual public comment, making sure that we have the residents of the city also have access to our meetings, virtual emails. Wherever people are in the city that want to meet us, that's where we should try to make ourselves accessible to them. So I just want to share my support for, you know, virtual public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Okay, and then Mr. Williams?
Yeah, real quickly, I took a look at the open meetings law while this discussion was ongoing. And the open meetings law doesn't actually make reference to public comment at all with regard to a common council or any other body. That's entirely up to the councils. So while the council has to be in person under the open meetings law and the state legislator is working on adjusting that potentially. The council has total control over, over public comment and the way that's made at its meetings. I would have to look at the council rules to make sure it's allowable under the rules as they're currently written. And obviously, there's an effort afoot to rework the rules. So that can be contemplated in the new set of rules. But, yeah, I think the, the length of comment and whether to include remote public comments is entirely an issue for the council to decide on.
The rules are silent regarding the general public's virtual participation. But adjusting the time allowed for public comment is well within the council's purview.
Okay, so, and, I mean, I, the idea of virtual or any kind of public comment is, you know, I think a good idea. Got so used to all these virtual meetings through the last couple of years. And that, you know, it's been, it's been valuable or invaluable hearing, hearing from folks. So I, I think we, I think we think about this now, have a further discussion. Well, Mr. Williams, you check on what changes we may or may not have to make and.
We also have to make sure the technology works because I would add that it was really clunky. I love the idea that, but when we did have virtual public comment in the chamber, it, a lot of times we weren't able to hear the people. It was, I, I think that we have, we have to make sure that we also have the technology for it before we really promise it to people. Because it's not going to be helpful if we say you can submit, you know, virtual public comment and then we can't actually hear them. So I would just note that. And I am totally for all of it. I just want to make sure that we have the technology to do it.
Thank you. Ms. Zamer, and then we'll, we'll move into our meeting. You're, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, as someone who was watching, I wasn't on the common, I wasn't on the council yet. But in December, that meeting and folks' public comment, you couldn't hear it when you were watching virtually. And it was tough to hear really anything. So that definitely would have to be addressed. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we will move into our meeting. Well, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. President. Thank you. Welcome. Is it seven o'clock?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Wow, my watch is slowed. Good evening. Welcome you to March 7th, 2022 Omni Common Council meetings. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Good evening. And if everyone would unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their names. Adams?
Here.
Anani?
Present.
Ballerin?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Frederick?
Here.
Howie?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Keegan?
Here.
Embro?
Here.
Love.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Romero.
Here.
Zamer.
Here.
Fifteen members present, no one is absent.
Thank you. Can you put up pledge allegiance to a pledge? And during this moment of silence, we hope that members and anyone listening will remember the invasion in Ukraine. And also, uh, in your moment of silence, you remember uh Pat Fahey, her husband and her daughter and their loss this this week. So we ask that people remember those during our moment of silence. Can you put up the flag, please? So we said pledge allegiance.
I think Ethan's working on it.
Yeah, sorry, I'm doing it right now.
Thank you, Ethan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. To everyone. Now we'll move on to our public comment period. Um, anyone who signed up for public comment, you have five minutes to speak about any subject you wish to at this time. Uh, you have to state your name and your address for the record. At four minutes, I will alert you that you have one minute remaining. Uh, and like uh, public comment period, council members cannot comment after you speak. Uh, if they choose to do so, they will do so at a later time in the meeting. So with that being said, clerk, do we, can you call the first speaker?
Leah Goldby.
She's connecting. Maybe let's go up. I think she just got it. There she is. Councilwoman, you're up.
Well, I guess I should unmute myself then.
Yes, you're up, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Greetings. Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Leah Goldby. I am uh dialing in tonight on behalf of, in my role of president of the New York Bicycle Coalition. We are a thirty-two-year-old statewide organization supporting people who use bicycles, whether they use it for transportation, for exercise, for their job, um, or just for fun. And um we are part of the New York State Safe Streets Coalition, which is a coalition of dozens of organizations across New York State who are supporting the eight bills of the Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act. Um, and I just wanted to thank the sponsor, Councilmember Anani, and the co-sponsors um for introducing this bill and I and this resolution. And I hope that um the resolution seventeen twenty-two twenty-two R. Um, and I do hope that the full council will join in supporting the resolution tonight. Having um served as a council member, uh, my recollection is that one of the top concerns of residents throughout the city are is the behavior of people driving on our streets where our children play um and where we need to walk and drive and um ride bicycles. And so uh these eight bills will help tremendously, tremendously to save lives across the state, including in the city of Albany. Um, if you take a look at the resolution, you will see that there are too many people who have been killed. And we we just um highlighted a few of those um tragedies of people who were walking or uh using a bicycle either in the city of Albany or were Albany residents outside of the city of Albany um who died way before their time. So I hope you take a minute and remember their lives and uh support this resolu- this resolution. Um, and then send it on to the state so that we can have these eight life-saving bills passed this year by the New York State Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk be called next speaker?
Next speaker is Ed Brennan.
Can you name Mr. Brennan? Can you state your name and address for the record? You're still muted.
Uh, yeah, my name's Ed Brennan. I'm at three eighty-nine McCromick Road in Albany.
You have five minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just got in. Didn't realize I'm gonna be hopping right into it. Uh, on behalf of myself, as a citizen of Albany and the Albany Bicycle Coalition, I wish to thank Mr. Anani, Ms. Romero, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Howie for their leadership in putting forth the this resolution um for the for New York State to pass the Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act. As vehicles have gotten larger and drivers driving faster and with less attention, our roads have become increasingly lethal and for vulnerable road users like pedestrians and cyclists. So we need New York State laws to change to address these dangers. We've been told by the Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act bill sponsors that our state leaders need to hear from upstate New York that these laws need changing. Last week, I was in a meeting with Mr. uh Navarro Lopez, the Deputy Secretary for Trans- Transportation and other representatives of the governor's office. They are aware uh of and watching this resolution of the Albany Common Council. And we urge all our common council members to vote for and pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
That is the only speaker that is currently with us, but I do, and he also submitted a written comment. And he shared it, so that's all I have for public comment today.
Okay, so seeing there's no other people signed up for public comment, we will deem public comment period close at this time. And we'll move on to approval of minutes from previous meetings. Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I offer the uh February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes for passage.
Second, motion.
Second. Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, continuing on to agenda, local laws. We'll move to local law. Uh, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I'm moving to discharge uh Local Law B of twenty twenty-two uh from committee.
Thank you. And that takes a majority vote of the councils. They're second on that motion.
Second.
We have a second, okay. Motion passes. Uh, so Madam Clerk, can you, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? None, so it is passed. Uh, now moving on to local law be held. Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Local Law B and asked for his passage on a roll call thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending section forty-two dash three eighty-four, powers and duties of part thirty-nine, which is the Commission on Municipal Municipal Internet Services of Chapter Forty-two, Departments and Commissions, to extend the time within which the commission must submit its preliminary report.
Thank you. Any discussion on this local law? Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you. Um, so this legislation is a recognition of the fact that uh we have an issue here in the city of Albany, particularly when it comes to uh access to the internet, the digital divide. Um, a couple of months ago, we introduced legislation to um get a feasibility logistics studies of the city of Albany actually owning and operating its own municipal internet. Uh, we came up mission and their task was to come up with a report um a hundred and sixty days after legislation passed. Unfortunately, due to COVID and other unforeseeable circumstances, uh, they have called for additional time. And I want to thank them for all the work that they do. It's not an easy job, and I want to thank them for their research. Um, so many of those people who are on the commission are volunteers, and they are doing research statewide nationally to make sure that we get a feasibility and logistics of the city owning and operating our own municipal internet. So they said they need time, and I think that the work that they're doing, they deserve some more time. So I just want to thank all of the for the work that they're doing, and I urge my colleagues to support this resolution, this uh local law.
Say any further discussion on this local law? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Adams.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Clark.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Continuing on to uh on our agenda, uh, reports of standing committees. Ms. Farrell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that the Law, Buildings and Code Committee will be meeting on Monday, March fourteenth, and we will be discussing local law A and um ordinance six twenty-two twenty-two, which was mentioned earlier in uh caucus, so we'll have a full discussion then, and I encourage everyone to come and discuss everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Mr. Howie.
Yeah, I just, uh, the Public Safety Committee, I asked Ethan to set up four meetings over the next uh couple of months. I'd like to do a meeting every other week. Um, not being able to go virtual might throw that off a little, but I just wanted to let everybody know that we will be scheduling and stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you. Just want to share with uh my colleagues that uh Parks and Recreation Committee will be meeting on uh March tenth. All are invited. We're going to be talking about Summer Youth Employment Program and all the phenomenal work that uh the commission and Parks and Recreation does for our city. All are welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, President. Alice, uh, the Planning Committee will be meeting on March ninth, will be uh taking on inclusionary housing uh as well as the Sidewalk Cafe and the renewal of the uh capitalized Albany's uh plans. Uh, it's uh March ninth at five thirty.
Thank you. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee meeting uh will be scheduled shortly. We'll plan to have one in the next couple of weeks to cover Resolution nineteen thirty-one twenty-two R for the Water Department. Let them come come speak to us as well as um another piece that we introduced last meeting, so we'll get that on the calendar.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Robinson has got it, his hand up. It's in the, yeah, it's in the trim.
Oh, yeah, his uh his background blends in with his brown hand. That's a part of your background. Go ahead.
President, the Human Resources, Human Rights uh com- uh Committee will be meeting on uh Thursday, March the seventeenth. Interview candidates for the Human Resource uh the Human Rights Commission uh for term ending in eight twenty-one twenty-four and eight twenty-one twenty-two.
Thank you. I'll open up the chat so that way I can see people's hands and their background. Happens with Ms. Mer- Romero a lot, too. Don't see the the background misses in, so thank you for that. Uh, so that's all for standing committees. Mr. Kimbrough. Hold. Local laws, ordinances, yes. Mr. Kimbrough, you're muted.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Rest of local laws on the agenda are held.
And.
And ordinances are held. We're on to resolutions.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to introductions of resolutions, uh, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution nineteen thirty-one twenty-two R and asks for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a new water treatment plant operator position in the Department of Water and Water Supply, which will affect the salary total in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be a referral to the Finance Committee.
Thank, thank you. Continuing on, resolutions introduce, uh, Mr. Kimbrough, majority consent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, motion to add Resolution twenty thirty-one twenty-two R by majority consent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. All of the favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Hyde.
So that, I was just raising my hand.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't think I got the M thing.
Okay. The M's, you don't have the the verbiage or at all, or the number?
I can email it to her.
I don't have it. I wasn't.
Okay, I can read it out if you give me one second.
Well, he had to introduce it first. It's Clark, go ahead. It's Clark.
Yep, um, no, I I believe that uh Mr. Kimbrough just introduced it, no?
No, we just voted to add it to the agenda.
Add it, okay, sorry.
Yes, no problem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to notice Resolution twenty thirty-one twenty-two R and ask that it be adopted by majority consent.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I have it now.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council in support of the people of Ukraine as they defend against the Russia uh against Russia's military attack on their sovereign nation.
Thank you. Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, uh, I believe we're all co-sponsors on this. Mr. Anani, are you discussing? I didn't see any hands, so.
Yeah, no, it was it was late. Uh, just want to thank uh Mr. Hyde Clark for, Councilmember Clark, for bringing this resolution forward. This is something that's been on all of our minds, and, you know, it's important that um that we stand wh- whenever we see injustice, you know, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And um, you know, it's a thing that is twenty-first century, somebody like who wouldn't think he could do, take over someone's country is quite frankly unacceptable, and we have to send a message, and I'm glad that the council member wrote this resolution. I fully support it. Um, as someone who represent probably one of the largest uh Russian community in the city of Albany, um, I speak to many of my constituents about this issue, and they also stand with Ukraine. So just want to thank the council member for bringing this legislation forward.
Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Anani. I just wanted to add the last part of this resolution, I think, is very important as well that the city of Albany uh has always been welcoming to uh refugees. And I think um, you know, we've seen that with other conflicts and uh happy to make a statement that this is no different in this case and that uh to the extent that there are refugees that do come to this. uh, to the extent that there are refugees that do come to the city, they will be welcomed and integrated. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I did come across a list of resources, um, of sites in the capital district that are accepting both monetary and item donations to aid Ukraine. The website is www dot five one eight Ukrainians. Um, I would love to email that to everyone, and, um, I can comment it on the Albany Common Council live video because, um, I think that's a really wonderful way for us to also, um, support the people in Ukraine. But thank you also, um, Councilmember, uh, Clark for putting together this resolution so quickly.
Thank you. See no further discussion, see no further hands. Can, we're all cosponsors, so we'll just do it on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution seventeen twenty-two R and asked for, uh, uh, in, passage on a roll call thereon.
Yes, amended.
I was amended, sorry. That's the word I was looking for.
No problem. Uh, can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council urging passage of all seven, I'm sorry, of all eight bills of the Crash Victim Rights and Safety Act in the New York State Legislature.
On this resolution, Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in recent years, the state of New York has seen a significant amount of victims, uh, fall to car crashes. Car crashes are still the leading cause of injury, injury deaths in New York and a direct result of lack of action on a state level. And this legislation is important to bring attention to safety and also rights of pedestrians. Uh, the city of Albany is no stranger to this overgrowing issue, and we must change that. And now there are thousands of residents within our city that look at multiple, uh, alternative modes of transportation in our city, whether it's, uh, cycling, whether it's taking a bus, or whether it's walking, um, around, uh, to work or to a local, uh, restaurant. Everyone has a right to life, uh, and also to a peace of mind. We must do everything we can to protect our residents as well as the right for them from stopping, uh, from falling to, uh, car crashes or, and we must attack this problem. We can start by backing this proposed legislation, which is, uh, eight, a list of eight bills, uh, Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act that is currently being deliberated on a state level. Uh, the package of bills will serve, uh, as a piece of guidance and legislation to protect pedestrians from falling victim to car crashes. Uh, quite frankly, this is a lifesaving piece of legislation, which will especially have a significant impact on our city. I want to thank, uh, my colleagues who support, co-sponsoring, uh, Gabriella, Tom Howie, uh, Jack Flynn, and also want to thank the, uh, Albany Bicycle Coalition for their advocacy. And I also want to thank my partner, uh, who helps me move the pineels and the tentwood forward, Leah Goby, for her tremendous work, um, on such an important issue. Uh, we definitely work day and night together to make sure that our neighborhood is moving forward in the city as a whole. And I'm glad to work with her to make sure that our city is more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion on this? Mr. Flynn?
I just want to say with the rising gas prices that, um, there will probably be a lot more pedestrians and bicyclists, uh, going to work and, and going to Washington Park. So I just want to make that aware, uh, for, for the drivers, you know? That Albany is a walkable city, and that there will be more people out there walking. I also want to, uh, say that this is the start of this resolution. I know there's other municipalities within Albany County that, you know, we're looking to, uh, introduce the same. So it is going to start from the city of Albany to go to county, and hopefully other, uh, counties can, um, follow our suit. So, but thank you to all.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to say a quick word on this, uh, because so many times we look at our, our communities, and for something this need, this, this is needed because of the lack of respect we have for those who walk and bike. It's unfortunate that our council, that we would have to pass a resolution like this and have a state resolution when we just have bad actors. And this is what government is for, when people do not respect other spaces and respect what they're doing, uh, this is when government acts. And so thank you, Mr. Anani. Thank you to all the cosponsors of this, um, because it, it is very important, so important, that we begin to, as a state, turn these numbers around on how we deal with bikers and pedestrians in our state. I remember when, first time I went to Vermont, and I saw how people addressed pedestrians walking and pedestrian biking. And I was, I was in awe how, how they were just friendly and people would stop and like, and that's what we need in this state. So thank you, uh, former councilman Leah Goby. Thank you for being a tireless advocate along with all of your supporters on this. It is needed, and, uh, let's make sure our state, uh, our state-led officials understand and hear us loud and clear. So with that being said, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, all members can unmute themselves. Adams?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Howie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Romero?
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Uh, moving on to that ends, Mr. Kimbrough, hold on.
Rest of, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, that is the end of the resolutions, uh, so we can move on.
Thank you. Uh, any miscellaneous? Mr. Howie?
Yeah, no, you had talked about during the, um, about the open meetings law and, you know, being virtual. You talked about council meetings. Does that include also the committee meetings? And that was something I would, I didn't want to ask during the committee reports. As of Wednesday, those, sorry, as of after Wednesday, next Wednesday, so from the seventeenth onward, those was all, would also have to be in person.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
I just want to, uh, let everybody know, thank you. Uh, congratulate the Albany High Women's, uh, Basketball Team who won the, uh, Section Two Championship the other day. Myself and, uh, Council President Ellis were at the game. And, uh, not only did the girls play well, but there was a well-attended, uh, fans at the game. So I just want to put that on the record. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Uh, Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you. Just want to set a reminder that, um, the St. Patrick's Day Parade is going to be kickoff, um, this Saturday. And I hope that all of us could, uh, able to attend. Uh, this year, I believe we are going to have a banner for the first time walking the parade. So it'll be great to show our numbers, uh, here. So, uh, just want to put that out there, uh, for all council members to attend. Um, I'm pretty sure Brett and, uh, Ethan is going to hold the banner, so I'm really excited to see that. Uh, but I hope everyone is able to attend. Also want to give a special shout out to Green Tech Basketball Team for winning the championship, and, uh, they're also sectioned. So we, you know, city of Albany, we're winning, and we got to keep it going.
Thank you, Mr. Anani, and thank you for volunteering people to do something you would like to be done. Uh, Ms. Zamer?
Um, I just, I was going to ask, uh, Councilmember Anani, what time were you expecting folks to, to meet up?
I believe the, uh, parade kicks off at two, so anywhere, uh, the, the parade kicks off at two, and we usually meet at, uh, Partridge and Central at, um, yeah, they wait from one thirty to two.
Yeah, now before.
And also, um, just a, a quick shout out to the Albany JCC Boys Basketball Team that won the championships last night. So another, uh, city of Albany basketball team champions.
All in for Albany, all over the place. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Councilmember Romero, a moment ago, mentioned, uh, five one eight Ukrainians. I just wanted to follow up on that. Um, you can either donate online or in person. Uh, they really couldn't, couldn't be an easier process. They have a really comprehensive list online of items they're accepting. There are certain items they can't accept that you think they might be able to, like rubbing alcohol or peroxide, because, um, apparently they can't send those things overseas in an airplane. Um, I know this because I, I dropped some stuff off myself, uh, over the weekend. They're accepting donations every day of the week, um, and on the weekends. Uh, they've got three collection sites, uh, at three Ukrainian Catholic churches in the area, um, St. Nicholas and Mordele, St. Nicholas and Troy, and St. Peter's, Saints, Peter and Paul in, um, Cahose, I think. Uh, and it was a really easy process, so I would recommend council members and the public to do that if they can.
Thank you, Mr. Williams for that. And Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, speaking of the, uh, honoring our, uh, our basketball teams at the request and working with Mr. Johnson, we're, we're going to be putting something together for both the Green Tech Boys, Albany High Boys, and Albany High Girls Teams, uh, proclamation. We'd like to, when we get back in the chambers, actually have them in, uh, like, like we used to, uh, way back in the day. Uh, so, yeah, we'll, we'll get those together, and we'll be inviting those teams so we can recognize them in purpose, uh, excuse me, in person. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Just a quick note, even if the public can participate, um, remotely, I think any support we can give the state legislation so that if we find ourselves in a pandemic again, that we, uh, don't have to operate via emergency orders and, uh, declarations from the governor. So I'd still like to see this body support an amendment to the open means law to our state officials.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Farrell?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, note, um, that we got some outreach about, um, youth in government. That was a program, um, that we would do every year with Albany High students. So, um, hopefully that's something that will be coming back again. We obviously couldn't do it during the pandemic, but, um, this is a little piece of good news to put in our hearts on this, uh, as things are warming up.
Thank you for that. That's right. Youth in government. It's a good time. So, Mr. Kimbrough, take us on.
Yes, okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everybody. Be safe.